Great, sorry about that, everybody. I had no sound, so I had to jump out and jump back in.
We got used to not having to zoom as much. Now we gotta get back into the realm of it. Hey Judy? Is there a time limit on how many minutes a person gets to speak from the public?
I don't know. The Town of Lansing does have something for town board meetings, I think, if I remember. Ron, do you know, is it three minutes or something?
I think so, if I remember. I know it's always on the agenda information, but not certain off the top of my head, but I think it's three minutes each.
So I think that is a privilege of the floor?
Yeah.
I don't know about if it's like a public hearing, if there's a limit.
I was just wondering, because I know that the gentleman wants to speak again. He was a, he liked to chat.
Yeah. I mean, we could impose that we're gonna do three minutes because we've had this hearing so many times now. John and Heather, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I think you can do that. We typically put time limits on when when there's a lot of people that need to speak, you know. But what you can do is let people sort of say their piece and then, you know, release them. Yeah, you know, thank you. And then and then you can go ahead and close the public hearing and you don't have to permit more.
Okay, I'll try to keep it under wraps today.
I was still learning, so I was just wondering about it.
And I think on the background information resolution, the second whereas has an August 10th date. I'm not sure if that's correct, or if it should be the September date, the last time we had a meeting.
Yeah, that should be September.
That should be September, that's what I thought. So September 13th, okay. All right, let's see, we're missing Maureen.
So Maureen did call me. She said she may not be able to join in. Her dog had surgery today, so she was going to try, but she wasn't sure she'd make it.
Have we heard from the applicant at all today, Heather?
Yes, and I have Eric Clay and May Lovelace in the waiting room.
Okay.
Also, I have an SEI submittals that I'm not sure what that is. And I have Drew Minton.
Okay.
Okay, well, there is four of us, so if we want to begin, we can. Hi, Jack.
Hi.
We have two of you.
I'm not sure why that is, and I'm also not sure why my picture's disappeared.
We have a Jack without a picture and Jack with a picture.
I'll see if I can do something about the bad one, but it's got a time lag too when I'm listening to it, which is making it hard to concentrate.
Do you want to go back out and come back in?
Let me try that.
Say I can kick one of you out. Whichever one you tell me.
Is that working better?
We can, we can hear you.
Good, good. I still can't get the video to work, but have at least gotten rid of the echoes on this end, so thanks very much.
Okay, so Heather and John, are we ready to go?
Yeah.
I am having trouble getting it to stream to YouTube, but it is recording, so I can upload that tomorrow.
So the other person who wanted to speak, are they available? Are they waiting?
I'm not sure who they are, but I can admit them and we can see.
Okay, and you have the applicant?
Yep, I have the applicant and then a neighbor.
Okay, that's fine. I think you might will open the meeting and you might will submit them, as if we were sitting there, so. All right, so let's call the October 12th, 2021 Town of Lansing zoning board of appeals meeting to order. On our agenda tonight, we have approval of the September 13th minutes, and we have a public hearing. So let's address the approval of the September 13th minutes. Would somebody like to move the minutes?
I saw move.
So a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Okay, and I do have a couple edits. Because I believe, Rick, you were not there, you were excused, but on line 50, you seconded the motion to open the public hearing, and I believe that was Pete Larson. And the same thing on line 196. Rick is down as being the second, and I believe that was also Pete Larson. Other than that, I didn't find anything else. Did anybody else have any other comments?
I couldn't make those changes.
Okay, all right, so let's vote on the approval of the minutes with those two edits. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, sentience. Okay. Thank you, Heather, for those. All right, so we'll go on to the public hearing. Do you want to go ahead and admit? I guess the other thing I want to say is, we do, oh, there's Maureen, okay, good. Have, or we have the need to enact Jack Young as a voting member tonight, as the alternate, as we are down one regular member today.
Would you like me to admit the SEI submittals? See who they are, what they need?
Yeah. Maureen, can you hear us? Maureen, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes, we just approved the minutes. Did you, we had two corrections in them. Did you have anything that you wanted to bring up?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna move on to the public hearing once we think we have everybody here. SEI submittals?
Yes.
And can you tell us your name? So we have that for the minute.
It's Tracy Kucci.
Okay, and what is SEI submittals?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to change the name on that. That's my work Zoom account. So I'm here to support Drew Minton.
Oh, okay, all right, so you'll be a person to be heard.
No, I don't need to speak, I just wanted to watch.
Okay. Heather, do we have anybody else in the waiting room?
We have the applicant and a representative of the applicant and a neighbor.
Okay, go ahead and submit people so that we can open the public hearing.
You want everybody in?
Yep. Can you mute them?
Sorry about that.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask everybody to go on mute, and then we'll open the public hearing. And then I will call for people to speak at that time. The rest of the time, please leave yourself on mute, as we're trying to work through another lovely Zoom meeting, so. We have already approved our minutes, and we're moving to the public hearing. We are holding a public hearing. Consideration on an appeal made by Amy Newman and Eric Clay on behalf of Newman Clay Revocable Trust, 281 Bill George Road, Tax Parcel Number 24 dot dash four dash two, located in the Lakeshore L1 with Lake Frontage zoning district. The applicant is proposing to demolish an existing shed constructed and construct a 10 by 10 accessory building at the same location. The proposed accessory building will extend two feet to the south from the existing footprint. The applicant is requesting permission to replace and expand a non-conforming structure per Town of Lansing Code, Section 270 dash 40. This is an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Would somebody like to move opening of the public hearing?
I'll move.
Thank you, Rick. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mary. All those in favor of opening a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, and those of you that may have missed it, we do have, Jack Young is a voting member tonight, as we are missing Pete Larson, one of our regular members. So we will start with Eric and Amy. If you can please describe, you know, the changes since the last meeting, or Mary, or sorry, May, so we have an idea of what the new plan is that we're looking at, please.
Well, thank you for seeing us again. I know some people have been in and out, so I just wanted to give a little bit of history. This is the third proposal, and we're back here with a proposal on the recommendation on the board that we rebuild at the current site, as Judith said. So the shed that exists today, we estimate is probably built in the late 70s, early 80s. So that's been an existing site for quite some time. What we're proposing to do is to extend the size two feet to the south. So we'll build on the existing site, just make it a little bit bigger. That will give us an interior space at about 7 feet by 11 feet. So we're looking at about 77 square feet of interior space. And that's, you know, it's not, it's not as big as our other proposals, our two other proposals were larger. They were also both farther away from the neighbor to the south, but we're, we're okay. We would be happy to receive a variance to make that change. We also would raise it off the ground, which I understand required to do because of floodplain requirements. And if we go up about three and a half feet, that'll give us enough room to deal with any vermin underneath and to store kayaks underneath as well. So that would be a good plan for us, and Erica, May. May, did you want to talk a little bit more about maybe some of the specifics?
Sure. So as mentioned, with the recommendation of the board, we are looking at the same location. The extra two feet is a current, is currently the space that is between the existing shed and the stairway that is there. So it's, it's just sort of taking up that space that's already essentially used for entering and exiting the shed. The, the levels, the ground height at the stairs is currently set at 384.8 feet above sea level. So that would be about where the stairs for this come down. The base flood elevation, as I understand it, is 386 feet. And the ground height at the platform that currently exists there is 386.8 feet above sea level. So that would be approximately the location of the current shed. It's currently right up against that, that structure. We're looking to, as mentioned, raise it up so that the bottom of beam is the 386 for base flood elevation, plus the two feet that were required. We are asking for one and a half feet additional. So that brings the bottom of the beam three and a half feet above the base flood elevation. The finished floor comes in at four feet, the top of the finished floor comes in at four feet nine and three quarters inches above base flood elevation. The total shed height from bottom of beam to top of roof is approximately 11 feet, three and three quarters inches. The existing shed is eight feet five inches high. The total footprint using the New York State Building Code definition of building area is a total of 100 square feet.
Okay, do any of the board members have any questions for the applicant at this point?
I would just like May to, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so I would like her just to state her last description on the 100 feet and what that entails. So the 100 feet is bigger than the 77 feet that the applicant described. Pardon me?
She was mentioning the approximate interior dimensions indicating how much storage space they would be given. The exterior dimensions, it brings it to 100 square feet for the total building area.
Okay, that includes the three and a half feet above the flood level? No.
So that is the full extent widthwise in all directions of the building. How much ground area has building above it?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so then I will move on to neighbors. Drew? And Drew, we have received your letter and the letters from your attorney. So we do, we do have that information, so you don't need to reiterate and all of that, so.
Okay, great, no, I appreciate that. Thank you for looking at that letter, which shows the impact that this new design would have on me. Seven feet from my living room window and partially blocking it, as you, I hope you will, you have that in front of you. You can look at the photographs in that letter. You know, I, in good faith, proposed a compromise, which would, I thought would be a better solution for me and for the neighbors, so they don't have to sit seven feet away from my house and listen to my stereo and me listen to theirs. And, but anyway, I just want to ask a couple of questions here. The application says that they would be enlarging it two feet to the south, so that would only be 10 feet long, is that? So, you know, the, the size of the current building is eight by eight, according to the zoning ordinance of Lansing, and I put that in my letter. There's, there's several mentions in the zoning ordinance about this, how the size of a building is calculated. So the existing building is eight by eight, 64 square feet. So an increase to 100 square feet is a 50% increase, which is quite large. And also, you know, the zoning, as I, as I point out in my letter, one of the the conditions, one of the instructions for the zoning board of appeals is to grant the minimum variance needed. In my opinion, the, the existing storage shed can be easily repaired, first of all, which would negate the necessity to raise it up above the flood level, which brings it even further up into, into blocking my window. The plywood floors, I guess, rotted, the OSB plywood on the outside, the bottom of my garage, replacing the plywood with some pressure treated would, would be the minimum amount of work needed to make a storage shed. You know, now the, we've, we've heard that, that they want to insulate it, make it a, you know, four season, three or four season space to keep the mice out. Well, you know, I think they are also, you know, admitted that they want to use it as a, as a place to sit, sort of living space by the lake. So, so what we're looking at here is, we're looking at a request for an area variance that facilitates the construction of a three or four season insulated living space a mere seven feet from another existing living space, my, my living room. All based on the fact that there currently exists a 30-year-old, 50% smaller, repairable, non-setback compliant by side and front shed on a lot that doesn't meet the minimum lot area requirements. So, and the justification is for protected storage. I think this is a lot to ask of a neighbor and for the neighborhood to enlarge by 50% this building, raise it up to meet flood standards for a living space, and and, and say that it's for, for stored, protected storage. This is going to severely impact my life, my property values, the neighborhood. In fact, you know, I know that the, the Board of Appeals really is acting on an area variance, which is really strictly setbacks. But, but they have to realize that by allowing this setback variance, or giving a variance to the setbacks for something so close to my house will, will severely impact me. It also impacts the neighborhood. I've put all of this in my letter, and it's all based upon code sections, specific code sections and paragraphs. There currently does not exist, for at least a mile up and down the beach, any kind of insulated accessory building that could be used as a living space that's regular, that's above high water, that's regulated by the Town of Lansing. So this is a new, a new thing, and I know the broad definition of accessory building says, well, they can, if they have an accessory building in existence, they can repair it and replace it, and, and they can use it however they want. Fine, but the zoning board needs to realize what impact that has on me, what impact it has on the neighbors, what impact it has on this mile-long stretch of beachfront, where now people can, can, you know, build cabins. This is really what this is, is a, is a, is a storage shed that could be used as a cabin, either by these owners or someone in the future. You know, if this property is sold, it will never be obvious that this was a repaired storage shed, this will be a cabin. So, you know, I don't know, there, there are lots of more things I could say. And I've said them all in my letter. I thought that proposing a compromise, which is very similar to what they originally proposed, further from my house would, would, would be acceptable, because it's, it gives them their cabin shed, whatever you want to call it. You know, you can see from the photographs, it has windows. It'd be further from me, it'd be, it'd be nicer for them to use, because it's not right on top of me, seven feet away. So, you know, and I, you know, as my attorney said, I will continue to fight this. I am not gonna accept a building seven feet from my house that could possibly be used as living space. You know, if they want to replace their shed, the, you know, and I looked at the, the flood requirements that John pointed out to me. And really, only if they are replacing, if they are repairing, if the repair is 50% or more of the value of the structure needs to be repaired, then it would be, have to meet the criteria for being raised two feet above flood level. In my opinion, the shed can be repaired, much less than 50% of the existing value. If it does need to be raised up and repaired, it should not be enlarged anymore than the existing eight foot by eight foot, 64 square foot outside dimension, which is the footprint. The inside dimension is irrelevant. So, that's my position. I can answer any questions, and please look at all the details in my letter, because there's all there with photographs and my proposed alternative, which I thought was, would be a no-brainer.
Okay, thank you, Drew. Is there anybody who has questions for Drew at this point? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask you to go on mute. Let me see. Tracy, did you want to address the board?
No, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else at this time that would like to address the board? Okay, I do have a question for the applicant. Did you receive a copy of Drew's letter and counter idea?
We received a copy of a letter from his attorney to you that had the counter idea in it. He referred to a letter that I don't believe we received subsequent, but I don't.
Yeah, with photos, we haven't seen that.
We haven't seen that.
We had proposed, our second proposal was to build south of the stairs, where Drew is suggesting, our first proposal, sorry, and that is above the high watermark that was already rejected.
Impermissible.
Yeah, and, and neighbors objected to that at the time as well.
And I want to point out that the drawings for the building show an eight, an eight by 12-foot structure, which would be 96 square feet on the outside. And the, and the, and the, and the notice that went out to the community says a 10 by 10 square foot structure. So I mean, it's a little, these are some small differences that I didn't catch until I just read the notice, but the drawings are eight by 12.
Okay.
And the existing structure is eight by 10.
To clarify the reason for the dimensions that I have given, my training is that as a code enforcement officer in the New York State system, so my familiarity is with that definition of building area. This is why I have stated that that's the definition that I was using for clarity. This is why I have stated that that's the definition that I was using for clarity.
Okay.
I'd like to address another point about the use. The existing shed has a vented window and it has electricity.
It has a screen.
Yeah, it has a screen. So we believe it was always intended not only for storage, but also as we want to use it, which is, as we've said, to sit with a book or a laptop. I don't think that changes. And the, the issue about closeness, you know, the, the shed predates our neighbor's house build. So the shed was there before the house was built. I understand there was a pre-existing fishing boat or something, whatever, some other structure, but it became a full house on the lake sometime in the nineties.
Okay. All right, is the board ready to bring this back? If so, if somebody would like to, to move ending the public hearing. Hold it just a second. Barry? Were you? Are you a neighbor or somebody who would like to be able to speak during the public hearing?
I don't want to talk.
They're asking if you wanted to talk, that's all.
Do you want to address the zoning board about this public hearing?
Just type into the chat that the YouTube link isn't working.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
I heard them say that the YouTube link isn't working, so they just wanted to watch.
Okay, then I'm going to ask that you go on mute. Or Heather, if you can put them on mute. And the same thing with Tracy. There we go. We have to unmute ourselves. At this point, if anyone, any of the board members want to continue with the public hearing? Or would you like, anybody like to move the closing of the public hearing?
I'll move to close it.
Thank you, Jack. Sir, a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 All right, so at this point, the discussion is back with the zoning board of appeals. If we have any questions of the applicant or any of the neighbors, we will ask you to unmute and answer questions at this point. So, discussion of the, the board? Where we at at this point? Does everybody understand what we are being asked to consider? John?
Could I just clarify with the applicant? That we are asking for an eight by twelve? I, I don't know where I got ten by ten from. So if that's, if that's my mistake, I apologize to this board, but can we just clarify for the record exactly what we're proposing?
It's on the petition.
Yes, the existing shed measured from all overhangs is eight foot, one and three quarters inches by ten foot, four and three quarters inches. So we are asking to add two feet to the ten. So it'd be approximately eight by twelve.
Thank you, May.
Okay, so we'll need to make sure that that's correct in the resolution. That it's a eight by twelve, not a ten by ten.
And could I ask one quick, quick question myself?
Sure.
The, the extra two feet is on the side away from your neighbor's property. So it, it wouldn't necessarily increase the, the amount of view that you're blocking from that regard.
It would not in terms of, it would not bring it any closer to his house. And it's set far enough back that he has, it only looks, if he's looking out the window to the back, that's the only view it blocks.
So he's still, he's looking at the same eight-foot wide structure.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And the height that's being raised three and a half feet, is that correct? From the current?
It's being raised up above the base flood elevation, three and a half feet. The base flood elevation is three hundred and eighty, or is...
So I'm just asking from ground level where the existing one is, how far above the existing one is this one going?
The existing shed is eight feet, five inches high. The new shed...
No, what I'm asking is from ground level to where the new bottom height.
Floor.
Help me out here.
The floor.
The floor of the new one.
The finished floor height of the new one?
Yeah, so the, the, it's now at ground level. How, how high up is, is it going to be for?
From ground level to finished floor, not from ground level to roof.
Yes.
Right.
Give me one quick second.
Okay, I just want to know how much we're raising it up. It's, I guess, my question.
So I can answer the question to the bottom of the framing. It's three and a half feet and the ground level is roughly the flood plain.
Okay, so we're lifting it up three and a half feet.
Yes, the ground level at that point is six inches from base flood elevation. We are lifting it three and a half feet above base flood elevation. The ground height at that point is three, I'm sorry, the ground height at that point is three hundred and eighty-six point eight feet. We are raising it three and a half feet above the three eighty-six.
And the reason why you're asking for the additional one and a half? Then what is required is why?
Two reasons. One is that our builder informed us that if we wanted to do any repair, having it a foot and a half off the ground makes it very hard to get under it and do any work. We could raise it a little higher than that. If we raised it the, the three feet above the existing ground, which is three and a half feet above the water level, we can actually slide kayaks underneath it and it has some functionality of storage, but also access for maintenance and repair.
Okay. Thank you. Did anybody else have any questions? Okay, so let's come back as board members. What, what are people thinking? Does this? How does this weigh in? With folks? Compared to what we've been looking at?
I think, to me, the biggest difference is the height of the building. I, you know, in, in terms of their request and what they want to use the building for, they're definitely raising it higher than the current building. Even with the three and a half feet, it's still higher. I don't know what that difference is. Maybe they could tell us again.
It, does that block the, totally block the neighbor's back window? No?
No, as demonstrated in the image that I included with the submission from the living room of the home at three ninety, what you are seeing through the window is the roof of the buildings in the structure, the, the structure at the the, the property to the south of Amy and Eric. So if you take a look at the diagram that's included with that, you can see from approximately where in the house you are standing, looking through that window, you can see that roof beyond their property. You can see that you're not really seeing anything of their property. All you're seeing is a small portion of the roof further down. And that is demonstrated with a line indicating that sightline and the fact that that sightline passes in front of the structure and does not connect with the structure.
What is the interior height, the ceiling height, from the floor to the ceiling compared to the current structure? Oh, you, you're muted.
I don't have the interior ceiling height of the current structure.
It sounded like from the applicant's description that it was initially built so that a person could be inside there.
I can give you the rough heights.
Okay.
The rough interior heights on a, on a roof that is not sloped with a proper slope for protection from the weather is roughly six and a half feet on one hand, six feet on one end and seven feet on the other.
Okay. And the current, the proposed? Somebody's muted there. The proposed is...
On the drawings, there's, it says fifteen feet tall at, at the middle of the roof. It's on their drawing.
That's the exterior. That's not the interior.
Oh, we're going for the height.
Inside.
I'm sorry, you had indicated the interior. Were you looking for the exterior height?
The interior. I'm just comparing, you know, trying to just compare the actual spatial element of the two structures.
I had not actually measured that prior to the meeting. I had switched to my other window to attempt to take a look at that. The roof is approximately ten inches thick.
Okay, that's a sloped roof.
Let it be a sloped roof.
Okay.
Three twelve, sloped roof.
Okay. Other comments from board members? Jack, do you have any questions? Any comments?
I think it's, I mean, it's certainly a much better proposal in many ways than the last one. I, I see the extra two feet doesn't bother me at all. The overall area doesn't bother me at all. The, the height is an issue, but I was just looking at photos that were submitted by, by the neighbor in the last round of this and adding three and a half feet to that didn't seem to get anywhere near to the height of his existing windows. So I'm, I'm a bit undecided on the, on the height. I, I wish it was a little bit less because of course we do want to look for the least that we can do that's, that's reasonable. But I really didn't see any significant undesirable change even from the eleven and a quarter feet plus or minus height that they're proposing this time. So I'm, I'm, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with it.
John, I just have a question. Can we approve the variance instead of at the three and a half foot at the two foot that's required?
Yeah. Yeah, you could.
Because that's a minimum.
That's right. Yep. So yeah, two, two feet above base flood elevation is the, is the minimum, but you could, you could certainly approve that.
Okay, what do board members think?
Well, I...
Doesn't matter.
I, I'm of the same notion that Jack described. The height is a little bit of a question for me. And yet if it's not really blocking anyone's view, I'm, you know, I'm not sure.
I think that, that the applicants have definitely put a lot of time into this and are really trying to, you know, enjoy their, their space as well as take into account of the neighbors. I think this is their third or fourth round at coming at this. So I, I, I think they are absolutely, you know, not trying to disturb the neighborhood and trying to, to make the best situation for everyone involved.
I agree.
I agree. I think a lot of effort has gone into it.
Rick, any thoughts?
Well, I, I kind of agree with Jack. I mean, I feel that, you know, I don't think it's really, you know, killing that their view. It's not like right in front of the window or whatever. And, you know, I mean, I think they, they went, you know, major strides here to make it smaller, to make, you know, do what, you know, they could to, you know, build it and, you know, I mean, if they're concerned with the water level or whatever, going up three and a half feet. But I mean, I guess that's the call, three and a half or two feet. But I feel that they, you know, they, they've tried to, you know, it's, it's a lot smaller than where they started and it's not much bigger than what they have. So, I mean, I, I kind of agree that I don't think it's really gonna, you know, kill the, the view and, and I think the people, you know, I just think that, you know, that it could work.
All right, so board members, are you ready to move on to the resolution? Or does anyone have more discussion?
I'm okay.
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 Okay. All right, so then we will consider the resolution in the first whereas they construct a eight by twelve instead of a ten by ten accessory building? Oh, sorry, John.
Yes, I just wanted to, to make a clarification on the resolution that we had mentioned on the agenda that this is an unlisted action. I, I've actually found that it's a, it's a type two action, which I placed in the resolution. So it's a, it's a type two action under seeker. Section six one, seven point five, C twelve.
Okay, all right. So that is the third whereas already says that. Okay. And the, the second whereas should read September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one and not August tenth, twenty twenty-one. So if everybody's okay with those changes to the three wheres, I'll start with the, the resolves. Are we good there? Oh, John, I just have one question. There was a proposed condition last time that we were talking about. Do I need to put that in?
I, I can't recall what that was.
This is language from Guy. On the conditional area variance approvals are not and do not constitute a determination upon concurrence respecting the nature or quality of underlying rights and title. Yes, so that, that should be a condition, one of the statements of condition. Okay, I'll read it at that point if that's okay with folks. All right, so we're moving towards our resolve. So the town of Lansing zoning board of appeals hereby makes the following findings with respect to specific criteria for an area variance set forth in town law, section two sixty-seven dash B three B and other applicable provisions of law and the zoning ordinance. So our first question is whether we feel an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby property will be created by granting of the area variance.
No.
No?
No.
No.
Okay, so it's using the current footprint with a slight modification.
But just to clarify, Judy, because it's in the, in the current footprint with just a slight variance, you do not believe that it'll have an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
So I would just ask the board to, to very clearly articulate... So I would just ask the board to very clearly articulate how you come to your findings.
My, my thought is that based on Mr. Minson's photos, the extra three and a half feet wouldn't actually cause a detriment to the neighbor. I don't think we have to determine whether something is detrimental to a neighbor by whether they believe it's detrimental, we have to make our own independent determination about whether we think a reasonable neighbor would feel that something was detrimental. And my sense is that by his own photos, it doesn't rise up even to the base of his, his windows, it doesn't seem to obstruct his view. And other than that possible impact on the one neighbor, I can't see any other impact really on the neighborhood or the, or the neighbors. So that would be my, my explanation of it, at least the way I'm thinking.
That sounds good. Are we good with that?
I agree, I agree.
And B, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Yes, no?
The benefit that he's asking for the storage and the space, it does not seem he can do it just remodeling his old building.
The benefit of getting out of the floodplain and also being able to store the kayaks underneath.
Right, what he wants to do.
It's, it's tough to do that and still stay in the footprint otherwise.
So are we saying no?
I was saying no.
Yeah, no.
Saying no, no.
No.
Was that enough on explanation, John? And whether the requested area variance is substantial. At this point, I don't feel that it's substantial, staying pretty much within the same footprint and going two feet to the south, which is towards the staircase, which seems reasonable to use that space.
So no.
I think if you did claim that it was substantial by comparing, you know, square footage or something of that sort, even if you did that, that would be mitigated by the fact that it's a very small building to begin with. So adding, you know, twenty-five or thirty percent or forty percent to a very tiny building is, you know, it's really not what most people would consider substantial. Even if the percentage works out to something that where you might have an open question. And if it was something that was much larger, if it was a two thousand square foot house being turned into three thousand square feet, that's substantial with no mitigation, but a shed that's, you know, eight by eight, you know, or eight by ten going to eight by twelve, I think that gets mitigated.
Right. Okay, and whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment conditions in the neighborhood? I would say no.
No, no.
No.
Current shed is already there, we're just replacing it. Okay, and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created? I would say yes, because he wants to replace something and make it a little bit larger.
We might say it's a mixed question, I mean, as to raising the building up, you know, the full three foot plus, it's probably self-created, but as to getting it up out of the floodplain, if the renovations are going to subject them to that requirement, then it's to some extent not self-created. So it's, you know, it's, I mean, I think, I'd certainly, if you say yes, I would say, but that's mitigated by the fact that there are elements of the proposal which probably aren't self-created.
This question always trips us up.
Well, I usually say, think of everything as being self-created, but here that, that rebuilding, the fifty percent cost, the the flood levels, I can see part of this is, is not being self-created.
I agree.
Right. Okay. So based on those answers, the determination based on the above factors, it's hereby determined by the town of Lansing zoning board of appeals that the following area variance is granted?
Yes.
Yes.
With any conditions here up stated. It being further found and determined that the benefit of the applicant outweighs any potential negative impacts or detriment to the neighborhood or community. And such area variance are the minimum necessary to adequate to relieve, grant relief and at the same time preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the safety and welfare of the community. Any specific, so the specifics is going to be an eight by twelve, three and a half feet high, or raised three and a half feet. The conditions being added is our normal condition where they have one year to get their building permit, our second proposed condition would be these conditional area variance approvals are not and do not constitute a determination upon or concurrence respecting the nature or quality of underlying rights and title or to literal use of Kuga Lake, but are only issued in respect of the bulk density setback yardage and any other dimensional requirements of zoning respecting the lots and parcels of the subject application. Would somebody like to move this resolution?
I'll move it.
Jack?
I'll second, thanks.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call, Beau, Maureen?
Yes.
Rick?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
Trudy Drake? Yes. Okay, so the area variance has been granted. All right, so you can follow up with John and Heather in the morning, okay?
Thank you very much.
That is all of our items for today, and we wish you guys all well. Hopefully, things can work out for you. John, anything else to come to the board tonight, in front of the board tonight?
That was the only application, Judy.
Okay, would somebody like to move adjournment of our meeting? Rick, sir, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Maureen? Oh, okay, all those in favor, say aye. Okay. All right, John, will we be needing a meeting next month, do you know at this point?
I don't know at this point, I haven't, haven't heard winded any applications.
Okay. All right, well, thank you all.